I would like to call the November twentieth of two thousand and nineteen city council meeting to order. First, we will hear from the proposed reconstruction of a street.
Good evening, council. We've come to you today with an abundance of reasons why we need funding for the construction of a new road, but our main priority and focus would be safety. We need funding for things like lights, stop signs, utilities, and speed limits to ensure a lot more safe and secure drive down Silver Lake Road we want to rebuild. Silver Lake Road takes up a good majority of landmass of our city of Saint Anthony, which is already small in part, and we just feel that a more welcoming and a more clean road would, it would give us a little bit more of a leeway and advantage into coming in and welcoming the other people into our city and hopefully encouraging people to move here so that maybe we can encourage them to move in and pay our tax dollars and fund more things like we're aware that the fire department is looking for funding for a new fire truck. They're not going to be able to get anywhere pretty fast without a new street. A lot of these streets got potholes and are dangerous and create worse road conditions for our drivers and our citizens. Not to mention that the weather's not getting any better out there, and as we handle more extreme climates and conditions, we want to make more winter-resistant roads to hopefully prevent a lot of accidents during the winter due to hydro... I forgot the word. Yeah, that. And hopefully just decrease the amount of accidents that we have during the winter season in general. We also want to take in account that when that snow melts and all that ice melts, that all of the water that seeps in through the street happens to get recycled and put it back into the system in a nice, clean way, and we need that in order to maintain a more functioning and durable road. We also need funding for new pipes and underground wires in order to help with the movement of water in order to run the city. And lastly, we just want to paint some crosswalks and add a couple of sidewalks for more pedestrians and recreational activities to make biking and walking a lot more easier for our citizens.
Now, you can ask if any of the council members have any questions?
Do any of the council members have any questions? I have a question.
What's your question?
So, you talked about adding crosswalks and bike lanes for bikers. Where would you like to add these?
We would just like to increase the number of sidewalks and bike lanes in general. There's not really any bike lanes down Silver Lake Road, I don't think, or if there are, there isn't really that much of them. We would just like to increase the size of the bike lanes, making it more safe for bikers and other pedestrians.
To my knowledge, the streetlights were actually just redone and Silver Lake Road was repaved, so...
We just want more funding to ensure the effectiveness and durability of that road lasts us a good, long while so that we don't have to spend any more money on stuff like accidents or creating a whole entire new road in the future.
Okay.
I got a question, too. So, how many prior accidents or incidents that happened as a direct result of poor road conditions?
Well, during the wintertime, it's pretty abundant. Accidents happen all the time. That's part of the reason why we want more funding to make our roads more slip-proof.
Are those accidents a direct result of the winter weather, like the snow and ice, or is it due to the road conditions?
I would say it's due to the road conditions, or at least, if not that, at the very least, they both play a part into the matter. Either way, safer roads and more durable roads will fix that problem.
Okay, and so if it is due to the roads alone, what would explain the increase in accidents in the winter versus the summer, spring, and fall?
I would say that when it's not winter, the ice in the water from the winter snow creates potholes, and then when we go into winter, all of those potholes, they get filled up with nothing but ice and water, so it creates even more hazardous conditions when it is the winter. And living in Minnesota, we got to account for snow and ice all the time.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
We can maybe save and move on to the next one.
We'll move on to the next one. Next, we will move on to the proposed installation of artificial turf at Central Park.
Good evening, council. Today, I'd like to talk about how Saint Anthony is a fully developed city, however, there is a lack of green space. All right. Our proposal of artificial turf will allow more activities to occur without the worry of weather damage as we have faced with previous years. Supporting soil underneath will allow no water buildup, so these activities will be able to occur, like our booster clubs and our sports teams will be able to continue with their practices and games without the postponing that we have dealt with. And Jasper, would you like to add on to this?
So, we are currently looking to redo both the practice and the game football fields. Each one will cost about one million dollars, so two million total, and we're trying to... we're going to use, we're going to apply for grants, get money from the district, and hopefully get a couple of sponsorships to pay for it. So, as a varsity athlete, I personally would very much enjoy to have this because as the season went on, the grass kept getting worse and worse, and it really affected our practices.
Do any of the council members have any questions?
I have another question. To my knowledge, maintaining a turf field and installing it would cost more than maintaining a grass field. Any thoughts or...
See, we have to see this turf field as an investment because once it's initially installed, yes, it's a very large initial fee. However, the maintenance as it goes on from the public works and the high school staff will be like a fraction of the cost of the saw field and how that is throughout the years and the maintenance fee for that, so...
And what if there's like a ripper air-in-the-turf installment?
Well, that is up to the public works and the high school staff. I'm sure they will get that taken care of very quick. However, a tear in a high school turf field is a lot more minimal compared to like, you know, puddles upon puddles and, you know, just mud pools that these athletes have to play in, so...
What season would you put in these turf fields? Because then they won't have anywhere to practice.
So, we'd probably do it during the spring because games are usually occurring in the summer and the fall on these fields, so to avoid...
What about any of the residents that would like to use the practice field space for any recreational activities that they want to do?
The installation of both these fields are not just for, you know, booster clubs and high school athletes, but also for the public as well, so they're more than welcome to use that space for their own...
So, but if you're redoing the practice fields, what about residents in the spring, what about residents in the spring that want to go there and also have fun with their kids or anything else?
Well, because we're just doing the practice JV field and, you know, that whole stadium field, that also leaves the majority of Central Park and that pavilion open to the public domain, so...
Will this affect any other sports or getting to school and the parking lot right next to the practice field during that time?
We are just starting off with the practice field and the varsity field, however, we are seeking to install this turf in like the baseball fields and those areas as well, but we're starting off small and working our way up to that.
We'll come back to this. Next, we will move on to the proposed purchase of a new fire truck.
Thank you for taking the time to hear our proposal. While the other proposals here are indeed in, are improvements to public safety, neither are quite as necessary as a new fire truck. The old fire truck has been around for thirty-three years, and it is antiquated, to say the least. The truck is beginning to have problems and become less reliable, which, when your business is saving lives from fires, that can be very problematic. It is, well, yes, it is becoming much less effective, and the cost of repairs is getting higher. The new one, although it is an intense investment upfront, will require much less maintenance and, in the long term, will be a large benefit.
So, with this new fire truck, what would come along with it is the new technology. The older one didn't have, they have old seat belts, no airbags, no air conditioning, or like no support for the firefighters, say if they got in an accident. As the new one would provide airbags, air conditioning, a roll cage, more space for tools and anything else that they would need to bring along for this. And then also with this new technology, it would have a better gas mileage as Saint Anthony is being like more of a fuel economy, trying to be more green and be more environmentally safe. This fire truck would have more fuel efficient and be, provide a lot better for the fuel economy as well, and then it would last a long time. Fire trucks for around Saint Anthony get replaced around every thirty years, so as though it may be more expensive to replace right now, it would last a lot longer over the time.
Once again, I'd like to say thank you to the council members and mayor. Public safety is our number-one priority, and I would just like to say that for sure, Silver Lake Road might need to be repaired, but that is also a county road, and we could also request money from the other county to get the money for that, and does not have to be all relied on Saint Anthony. Once again, yes, our fire trucks are thirty-three years old right now, and most fire stations replace their trucks every ten years, and so we've waited to the point where it has become a big safety concern for us to get from one place to another, and these are men and women that are putting in twenty-four-hour shifts of their lives to go and save people's lives or just make people feel safer in general, so their safety is also our concern. And it may cost money to buy a new truck right now, but it's going to end up costing more money to maintain the older one as parts are becoming harder to find and more expensive for the older trucks. And after this proposal, we won't need to come back for a while, seeing that we've taken such good care of our trucks for a long time. Thank you.
Are you looking to replace all of your fire trucks or just one?
We are just looking to replace one as of now. We are, after we call in our trucks in the winter, we make sure we wash our trucks and keep the salt off, so we maintain our trucks for a long time. So, as of right now, we only need one truck to be replaced.
Any of the council members have any questions?
I have a question. If I'm not mistaken, you guys purchased another fire truck pretty recently, about a year ago. What would exactly warrant a purchase of another fire truck?
We have two types of trucks that we mainly use, one for most public safety and one for huge fire emergencies, and it would be nice to have both available for us to use just to make sure that everybody is safe, on time, and reasonable.
I wouldn't say luxury and it being nice is a plausible reason for you guys to get a new fire truck. If you have gotten one just recently, adding on a new one and asking for the city to pay for it is kind of reach. Are you looking for any grants?
Of course, we'd be looking for grants, but it's, our money is coming from taxpayers as well, so we are just kind of looking for public safety in that the fact that we don't have airbags or air conditioning in the winter, and winter's coming and a lot of emergencies happening overnight, and it's just the safety of the public, of us getting there on time, and the safety of our great firemen and firewomen that work hard for us to be safe.
With new trucks come new technology, so do you feel like the fire department would need new training on how to use this new truck?
It is not really necessary to have new training, or say that we will have new technology in the way of new utilization of our trucks, having it more efficient for us, having more space on our trucks, using most, every inch of our truck, as we'd like to think, for air vacuums and water hoses and stuff like that, not as, say, high-tech electronic equipments, maybe a GPS to find more efficient routes, but mostly our new technologies are just making it more efficient for us to get our equipment on time.
Okay. We'll come back to this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any residents have anything to say?
Okay, so the residents have decided, or what we want is that, I'm representing our opinions on the roads, and we don't necessarily think that we need any new roads to be erected or any new like construction of highways or anything because we think that would make noise and issue, and it would kind of disturb the peace of the neighborhoods. But we would like some reconfiguration of the roads that we have, like, as an example, the speed limit on Lake Stinson could go up, or we could add turn signals and extra lanes in a couple of specific roads. Yeah, streetlights, stuff like that.
I have a question. So, how would the reconstruction or addition to new parts of a road be different from reconstructing a road, like adding new things? What would the difference be?
Well, because we kind of have roads and routes to get to everything pretty efficiently, and I don't really have an issue with getting anywhere like in time, and I don't feel like it's a huge issue for anybody else, but we would just be concerned with like the convenience of driving to places where you might need to get, and the configuration of the roads to be more safe and efficient.
So, if they're already safe and efficient, what would, why would you need to add anything?
Because it kind of bothers us.
What would you like to configure?
Okay, so we want the speed limit on Stinson go up to like thirty-five. Okay, so like the speed limit on Stinson could go up to like thirty-five, and like later on down towards the more industrial part could go up to like forty, maybe. And then the lane or the road going down from the school, we want the right side to be a right-turn lane only so that people don't cut in front of the other cars who are trying to go straight.
So, are you looking to make things more efficient or more luxurious?
I would say more efficient, and it would cause less accidents.
Accidents where? Where, are there any accidents that you know of?
No.
I'd say, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is actually three proposals that we will be voting on shortly here, so you may want to kind of frame your questions around as for the residents in regards to how this effect one of these three proposals be, because when the residents are done, then you are going to need to decide which one you wish to vote for. So, they may be subjects that may be of interest to the council, but at this point in time, that could be tabled for further discussion later.
So, go next.
Okay, we'll hear from the next proposal.
Thank you, council. I'm here to speak for the residents on the turf field in Central Park, and the residents are not in favor of putting turf in Central Park because we've found turf to be more conducive to injuries. Since the turf grabs your cleat more so than regular grass does, it puts more torque on your joints and ligaments, which will increase your chance of injuries, which we don't want to have happen to our athletes.
Does the council have any questions?
Does the council have any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, fire trucks. Fire trucks are expensive. They're not cheap. We could use the taxpayer dollars that would go to a fire truck for something like roads or adding more crosswalks, which we need on Stinson. I mean, I've biked there like a million times and almost got hit because there's not a crosswalk, so me and other residents suffer from that. The roads, I think Stinson especially, I could use a road repair. I like what they did with Silverwood, or Silver Lake Road, especially for the smaller cars. Me, I drive a truck, so I don't even really have to drive on the road, but like, but for smaller cars, for smaller cars, it's a good idea to, you know, so they don't break, especially if you're driving like a Prius or something like that. So, with the money we could use, instead of buying a fire truck, we could use that to spread fire awareness, add more hoses around or something like that. Yeah, and you know, if the department really wants a new fire truck, why should it come from taxpayer dollars? Why can't the, they can raise the money themselves if they really want one. I mean, we could have like a GoFundMe page or something like that. I mean, it sounds crazy, but it probably would, it would work, so... I mean, we just bought a new fire truck. We don't need another one.
Can the audience please be quiet?
I'd like to touch upon what Nathan said. He said that we just got one, so we don't really need another one because it was just last year that we bought one. So, if you get another one, that's not the best use of our money, especially the taxpayers. So, also, the luxuries of the new one aren't exactly needed. They're not going to be, while they're nice, they're not a priority, and I think that the money can be used in much more better places, you know? There's better ways to use the money, such as roads or anything else, really.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you all for participating. So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, in front of you are three choices that you'll need to vote on, and the procedure would be is any one of you can make a motion that you wish to, for any of the three proposals, and then that person would need a second to be able to have the discussion occur. So, we can leave it out, and then you will actually have to have a majority to rule on which one the projects are. So, as an example, somebody can make a motion for one of the projects, and if nobody makes a second on that motion, then there's no more discussion on that. So, you will need to have a second. So, then when somebody does make a motion and you get a second, you have an opportunity to explain why you want to wish to vote for that project, and then it will just be a simple majority, so you'll need three votes to be able to get that project voted in. Does that make sense? So, at this point in time, does anybody wish to make a motion on any of the three projects?
I move to make a motion on the proposed reconstruction of a street.
So, we have a motion by the mayor, or is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second, now we can have discussion. Other members, those that made the motion or others that did not make a motion, do you have anything you wish to add in regards to why you'd like to have this or not have this project?
I think having construction on Silver Lake Road would cause a lot of problems, and I think it would make it too busy in Saint Anthony because it's already busy enough on that road, so it would make other streets, like the detours, a lot more traffic.
Okay, any other council members wish to say how they feel about the motion that has been made, either to support or deny it? Okay, here ain't none. Is there any other motions that somebody wished to make in regards to this, to another project they'd like to see?
I motion towards purchase of a new fire truck.
Okay, we have a motion for a fire truck. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so any discussion? Any discussion from any of the mayor or the council members on if they'd like to support the purchase of a new fire truck or not interested in doing that?
I'm not interested.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If we do construction on a road, we wouldn't even be able to start now with winter coming up, and just getting a fire truck now, we would actually be able to use it right now, so I favor the fire truck.
I don't believe that the fire trucks are as of use heavily right now, especially during the winter. I don't think there's as many fires as there is in the summer, spring, so I don't think a purchase of a new fire truck is useful, as useful right now as to repairing potholes and new streets for the snow.
Any other comments?
They don't just use the fire trucks for fires. They have, they save a lot of people's lives doing everything else, so they need the new technology, and with this old fire truck, they have to make a lot of repairs, so might as well get the new fire truck in now.
How would the fire trucks get along if there are potholes in the roads and slippery roads due to old pavement?
Slippery roads are due to the weather.
Okay, but if the roads are old and they have potholes in them, wouldn't the fire trucks get stuck just like any normal car would, or...
Not the new ones. The old ones would get torn apart because...
I mean, you would need a new road for anything to get by.
All right, is there, is there anybody who wished to make a motion on the artificial turf? Okay, here ain't none. So, the first motion that was made for reconstruction of a street, so we need to all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, not in favor? Say nay.
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 Nay, okay. So, that motion failed on a vote of three nays and two ayes. Okay, so the second motion was the purchase of a new fire truck. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All righty. And against? Both, excuse me. Those voting against?
Nay.
Nay.
So the purchase of a new fire truck passed on three ayes and two nays. All righty, thank you very much. So now, the meeting is over, so we have an opportunity to see if we would reelect the mayor and the council. Because you guys were all the voters. Okay, so if I raise our hands, would you reelect this council member? It's close, it's close. Maybe a recount, I'm here. How about this gentleman right here? How about this gentleman here? Would you reelect him? How about her?
They're good questions.
And then finally, would we reelect the mayor here? Raise your hand. Nice job, everybody. I think hopefully what this experience taught you sometimes a little bit that it's hard to, well, tell us, mayor and council, how did it feel being on the mayor and council? Mayor, you can start off first. What was it like being the mayor?
I feel like it's hard to please everybody and get everybody's opinion into account, especially since these are all good points, and the residents all brought up things that the city, that the city does need, but it's, I think, it all relies, like, depends on prioritizing and what should go when and where.
Council members, how did it feel being a council member?
It was cool.
And why is that?
I have power.
In power? Okay, you like the power, okay. Fellow council members? How'd you feel being a council member?
I don't live in St. Anthony, so I didn't really know what we were, what places we were even talking about, to be honest. So I don't really know what was going on.
Gentlemen, over here.
It was stressful trying to please everyone.
And then, how about you, sir?
It's hard to, for multiple groups to get what they want.
All right, how about those pitching the project, obviously looking at fire last, but artificial turf folks? What'd you think? You got, you didn't even get a motion there. Sure, and why is that? All righty, the new street folks, what do you think? Tell us about your experience. Were you frustrated? All right, you guys are harsh. All right, residents?